We have agenda.
And we got our.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call the April 16, 2025 Town Council Regular Session Meeting to order. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor White, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, no God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor White.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
A motion would be in order to seal the minutes of the non-public session due to because it was determined the divulgence of the information would likely render a proposal action ineffective.
Thank you, Town Manager. So at this time, I would accept a promotion, a promotion? A motion, a motion to seal the minutes of our 6:45 non-public session.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
All the seconds. Thank you, Counselor Dormble. Any discussion on whether or not to seal those minutes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda, then, is a roll call. All councilors are present and accounted for. Nice to see you all on this mid-April evening. And moving right along, item four is the election of officers, adoption of the town council rules, and the review of committee assignments. You've got A and B, Town Council Rules and Town Council Committee Assignments.
There should be a C.
Add election of town officer.
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Okay, so the first item is the Town Council Rules for 2025-2026. Do I need to accept a motion to approve these rules?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the Town Council Rules for the coming year.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Any discussion or any motions to amend? Counselor Lamatina?
Just quick, I believe it's the same as last year. There's nothing, no changes.
Nope.
Okay. No change?
Worked fine last year.
I agree. Okay, seeing no discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye. Thank you. And then, item B is the Town Council Committee Assignments. I don't believe this requires a motion, but did any councilors, tell me you're incorrect.
You will need one at the end.
At the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Did any councilors, does anyone request different changes to their committee assignments? Counselor Lamatina?
Okay. Not changing committee assignments, but I'd like to add to this list at least two additional spots for the community power, primary representative and the alternate representative.
And I think you mentioned that, Counselor Lamatina, can you remind me, though, what are these?
Community power, the member representatives from each town. There's a primary representative and an alternate. The member representatives get to vote on member-related items, on board meetings or whatever. There is a third position that I would suggest that stay with the town manager, and that is the executive member, if you exactly how it's termed. The executive has the authority to set the rates or add an adder fee and determine what the default service would be. I would recommend that that stay with the town manager.
And I believe that the resolution that was passed, it does assign the town manager, though.
You can actually name anybody in the document, but we've named.
We passed a resolution naming.
So that doesn't need to be reiterated.
That doesn't need to be there. That's right.
Okay. Then we will add those to committee assignments. All right, so let's go back to, we can go back to the original question. How do folks feel about their committee assignments? Is there anyone who requests reassignment? Anybody feeling underutilized?
I don't feel underutilized. But the CIP is a very infrequently meeting endeavor, and if anybody would like to, you know, do something that's very infrequent and still, you know, have a committee assignment, I'd be very happy to swap if that's, you know, desirable to anybody.
Just to follow, traditionally, we gave, it was always a first-year counselor who'd get that because it's somebody who goes through all the departments and learns the ins and outs because you do that a lot with the CIP. Since everyone's been reelected, if there's anybody who hasn't done it, that's probably a good way to learn all the departments as well. They do meet in the early afternoon, I mean, late afternoon.
What is late afternoon?
Four o'clock, I believe.
Like on a weekday?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine.
Was it four?
To continue.
Is it four?
Well, we've had to change the time.
Yeah, to accommodate people in the.
Yeah, and it's actually, that has been a real, a real barrier to meeting, finding a time that works for everybody because, well, four o'clock is not good for all of you.
And you said infrequently. How often have you?
I think we met four times last year.
That makes sense.
And it's usually like in a small.
And it's only at the end of the.
Yeah.
Year. There isn't, and there isn't a lot that you are responsible for in between meetings. It's really just a pair of eyes on figures and making a recommendation. The process, the CIP process is, you know, is supposed to change and become a little bit more meaningful as a planning tool, so that, so that the frequency of meetings may be different this time around because the process may be a little bit different. But I, I don't know that. That's just speculation at this point.
Okay.
Is that something you're willing to take on?
Yeah, sure.
Awesome. I've done it. It's manageable.
Yeah, it is. And it's kind of fun, too, the first couple of meetings, and then you decide, oh, I don't want to do this again. But then it's already over, and it's okay.
In most communities, the CIP committee is actually the planning board in the state.
Which.
So we're rare that it's not.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
For a planning body to do that.
Yeah.
But the planning board has so many responsibilities, I can also see why it's been moved to a separate body.
Okay. Well, thank you, Counselor Glazberg, for picking that up. Are there any other, is there anybody else would like to switch in a committee assignment, or anybody interested in one that they hadn't done that they'd like to kind of put forth? I've never been on the X. I'd really like to do.
Yeah, I was going to ask about switching from arts to planning board the same night of the week, but I, it sounds like CIP is something that'll be a nice in-between for me to kind of be familiar with it. I just, yeah, wanted to get to know another committee.
Oh, for sure. And it's a very, like, it's like, isn't like four weeks, like?
It is.
One small part of the year.
It usually starts early, July, when the department has to get the CIP forms, and by September 15, the committee has to send a CIP program to the town manager. So, it's pretty quick.
Okay.
It's fast and furious.
Already solved.
He's gonna hand out candy, too.
I have bread in the car.
Anybody else interested in exploring a different committee or shifting one that currently on? Okay, Town Manager.
I know about the community power one. My question is, does it have to be a counselor?
No, it does not, no.
So I'm wondering if, I mean, if you don't want to do it?
I'd like to continue.
Yeah.
I want to keep an eye on that at this point.
Yeah, okay. But I'm just thinking that if you want to advertise for an alternate or somebody not on the council, this would be.
Yeah, many of the communities do have a member from their energy committee that are the member rep.
And so, Joe, would you like to be, are you advocating for yourself as the primary on the community power?
Yes.
Okay. And then we would need an alternate, then, guessing we could advertise.
You are currently the alternate, if you want to.
Fantastic.
I do, I do like the thought of.
Getting into that?
No. Yes, that's super interesting, and I would, I probably would love to do it, but I don't think I have the time to do that. It's too big a topic, I think. But I do like the idea that the alternate would come from the energy committee. That makes a lot of sense to kind of keep it in kind of a circle that has, you know, some subject matter expertise and can kind of keep the conversation in the committee. Your thoughts?
But it doesn't, it doesn't have to, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm pretty involved in it, and so the alternate wouldn't be utilized all that much, but, you know, where it does affect rates that, you know, people pay in the town.
Yeah.
I think the council should be, even though we don't have to have the council members, I think it would be good to have the council on top of things.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
And that's you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Glazberg.
A few meetings ago, didn't you, at one point, say that you were wanting to step back from it?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on three committees and the board of directors there, and so I'm stepping back. I'm going to be the member rep and on one, on one committee.
Okay.
I'm stepping off the board of directors.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so what committee are you going to be on?
Governance Committee.
Okay. And does that change any of your requests for committees' assignments for council?
No, I'm fine with that. If anybody would like to maybe, the Riverfront Advisory Committee, things are kind of winding down at Riverfront right now, now that we're done with the master plan, pretty much. So there'll be, will be a lot of work on implementing some of the goals of the master plan, which are, you know, a living shoreline, things like that down there. That may be an interesting thing, if anybody's interested in that.
Okay. Anyone? Riverfront Advisory. Are you willing to continue on it?
Yes.
Joe?
When does the Riverfront Advisory Committee meet?
The second or third Mondays of the month at four o'clock. But again, that could potentially change the times.
Yeah.
I'll stay with that.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. I appreciate it. All right. Any other adjustments? Speak now, or whoever holds a piece? Okay.
I'd just like to mention quickly that we, it might be good to look over the committees and, you know, and see whether they should continue the way they are, maybe be adjusted. I note that, you know, the Riverfront Advisory Committee is an ad hoc committee. Since it's been going on for quite a while, the ad hoc part is probably not so true anymore.
No, actually, we're in discussions with the Conservation Commission, maybe taking over some of the stuff that they do and asking that it become a full-time committee.
Yeah.
Especially to the, working on maybe some grants that are available for like downtown revitalization and using that grant money on the Riverfront because it is downtown, too.
Yeah.
Is there any official process by which committees get reviewed?
Every so often, somebody says, why don't we review the committees?
Okay.
Is he often they meet? I mean, the ones that really, that don't often meet are the ones, like Highway Safety and Licensing Board are, we have them by statute, but they, we have to meet once in a while to review certain things. Other than that, most of them are.
Parking Commission.
Parking Commission. That's going to be probably getting active soon. So, because they're doing the study right now. So, yeah.
The diversity committee is, they.
Oh, yeah. We haven't had a meeting in a long, I think since the pandemic.
Now that, or DEI is a bad word.
Right.
Is it legal?
I have to double-check what's going on.
That would be great. Any more committee business? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the third.
You need a motion and a second to accept the committee assignments.
Okay, thank you. That's when we need the motion.
Yeah.
All right. So at this time, I would accept a motion to accept the committee assignments as we've just decided.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. Thank you, councilors. And there is one other item on our election of officers, adoption of town council rules and committee assignment, and that is the election of town officers. Our town council officers. Do I have any, and we have.
Chair and vice chair.
Do I have any nominations at all, any at all, for council chair?
I'll nominate Counselor Conley for chair.
Second.
Did such a good job.
Are there any other nominations for council chair? Awesome. Okay, okay. Thank you. Yes, I'm willing to, I'm willing to continue. Do you need to have a vote?
Do you have a motion, do you have a motion or a second?
A motion for me to remain as chair.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Next is nominations for the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice, council vice chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Counselor Ward as vice chair.
Second.
All right. Counselor Ward, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, yes. I mean, I don't want to move the chairs.
That's fair.
And he loves vice.
So we've already made a motion to accept Counselor Ward's chair, already seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item five, public forum. Can you believe it? Okay, is there anyone from the community who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:20. And now, items, moving right along to item six, Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes. We have one set of minutes this evening, councilors, and that is for the April 2 Town Council meeting, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Shall move.
Thank you, Counselor White.
And I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Any discussion or revisions? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that was double.
Okay. All right. Item seven is to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations. And we have one appointment, and that is Ben Buckley. Appointment is alternate member to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission with the term expiration of April 2026. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Glazberg. Any discussion on Mr. Buckley's appointment? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. And then the other item on this part of the agenda is Morgan Santos's resignation from the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resignation.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Glazberg. Any questions or discussion? We did receive Ms. Santos's letter of resignation, and we're very sad, did a lovely job, and wish her the best, and thank you so much for, thank you her for her service. Seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dormble.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Conley. Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. And it is now time for the report of the town manager. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two items, not in my, well, one is in my report, but I have much more detail. That's Senate Bill 297, the risk pool bill that was submitted. It has gone over to the House, and it's going to be in the House Commerce Committee. I met this week as a group of, from the municipal association, there's a handful of us that met with, a handful from the Health Trust Board of Directors to discuss it, and what are the next steps. And basically, it's lobby, tried to get the, our legislator delegation to oppose 297 and the impact that it's going to happen. One thing that I was, that many municipal officials were confused about was while they said that they would be, they did never said they were going to start, fold the Health Trust. They said they were going to stop offering health insurance. They still offered dental insurance. They'll still offer dental and some other insurance products that they do have, but they would fold health insurance if that, if 297 became reality. I know it's just semantics, but I just, I didn't realize that that was the situation till this week. I met, we met with them yesterday. The House Commerce Committee will be hearing the bill on next Wednesday at 1:30 in the afternoon in Concord. I intend to be there. My understanding is that there may be a motion, an amendment to move the oversight of insurance products from, of risk pool products from the Secretary of State's office to the Insurance Commission, where, makes sense, but we haven't seen anything about that yet. There's also a consortium of seacoast officials that have been invited to attend a meeting next Thursday evening in Rye. There is a select board member there that who is an expert in insurance products, and have been asked to go to that meeting as well. So, again, to figure out what can we do to make sure this doesn't come to fruition. So, it's been a lot of meetings this week and going back on Friday and then next week, to have more discussions. Just want to give the board, the council, an update. I am looking.
Counselor Dormble.
Thank you. Have you had, Town Manager, have you had any requests for information from our town representatives?
I've actually sent things out to them.
Yeah, and have you, have you had any interaction?
No, they're just, a lot of them, I've talked to Senator Perkins-Wolcott on the phone a week and a half ago or so, expressing our dismay for the passage of the bill and asking, you know, to please reconsider, you know, when it comes back up at committee conference, to reconsider it. A lot of it, it went through so fast. I think that was one of the things. I don't want to, it sounds like she didn't, they didn't know it was coming, but I think it was just, it, it's, the way it was, it sounded that, oh, we're just putting some bumpers on this to make it safe versus what it actually would do. So, yes, I have had conversations with the delegation. Most of them have responded, I'd say, out of the four state reps that we have, because we do, remember, we do have a flotile one that we share with Exeter, who's also the minority leader in the House. I've heard from, I've heard from two, and I'm just going to continue sending them the information I have.
Excellent.
The next item is, I'm in discussions with Primax to set up goal-setting session again this year. It looks like it's going to have to be in early June due to just their schedule and the way everything's going to be following, following in May. Their annual conferences is in, are off week as well in May, so we. is in, are off week as well in May, so it would, it wouldn't line up the right way, so it may have to be in early June. But I'll let you, the council, know when I get a more concrete date on that. Just update on the, March completes the third quarter of the fiscal year, and the operating budget is 74% spent, slightly higher than the previous fiscal year, but lower than they anticipated. For the first time in a number of years, direct assistance is over expended. Rental assistance continues to be higher than anticipated due to the housing crisis. Part-time, the part-time firefighter salaries are over as well. This is due to the PerDiM program we've put in place for coverage. This is somewhat offset by the full-time salary line being significantly under expended. So we didn't know those two things were, that was going to happen. Revenues are on target. We've collected 95% of anticipated revenue for the fiscal year. We did see a rebound in motor vehicle registrations. That was one of the ones I was concerned about at the beginning, halfway through the year, with 82% of our anticipated revenues collected for that, and built, building permits have as well, with 121% of anticipated revenues collected. We just thought it was going to be a little bit softer this coming year for building permits, but we're doing fine there. So fiscal year '25 operating budget provides funding for a part-time communications manager. We've been discussing that. This position was intended to strengthen the town's communication efforts by developing visual and written material, written and visual materials, managing PR and media outreach, overseeing social media contact, and producing promotional materials to increase public awareness on town programs and services. The position would also support emerging communications and foster strong relationship with the local media outlets. After reviewing our option and discussing with other municipalities what they do to achieve this, I requested a proposal from the John Guilfoyle Public Relations Group. The firm is a full-time public relations communications agency with a focus on supporting municipal governments, police, fire departments and school districts. The firm provides a range of services, including basically everything I just said, I don't have to reread it, and JGPR currently works with more than 300 government agencies, nonprofits and small businesses across 14 states with concentration in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Connecticut and Vermont. The company is led by John Guilfoyle, a former Boston Globe reporter and deputy press secretary to Boston Mayor Tom Bonino. After discussing the proposal with the media manager and the chiefs of police and fire, we felt that using a firm was a much better fit. So the town has engaged JP, JGPR to provide comprehensive communication support on monthly basis. The scope of services includes content creation, up to four press releases a month, anything we need, consulting services, this is 20 hours of communication, and crisis consulting services per month. So we can ask them questions. Typical is, if something happens with an employee that you have to get rid of, this is who we talk to, if we, how do we, let the message get out there. Media relations, they have relations with the media, all the media outlets around the area, so they'll be the one pitching ideas, and if we have media inquiries, we'd send it to them. They'll do event coverage, so they'll come to different events that we may have. They will be doing social media support, and for, they do offer 24/7/365 for all services. One of the big ones that the two chiefs appreciate is emergencies, that if there's an emergency in town, right now, the chiefs have to get off the emergency and deal with the press. That will no longer happen. They will now call the, this, this group, and they will handle the press and get the information and make sure they get, the media gets all the information that's needed. So it takes it off the, the hands of somebody who should be managing the, the emergency and puts it on the, an outside individual who will get that information out there. In addition, it's much more or less expensive, $7.99 a month, and the arrangement, like I said, it's, it's to enhance the public communications and just improve media engagement. So, we have met with them and signed the contract last week, and starting up now, and we see how it goes, and, you know, I've talked to other communities, it's worked very well. They do a lot for school districts, so just thought this would be a better way to do at this point.
I have questions, you want, I have questions, you want now, or you want after your, so in the past, like Community Power, we've had a number of things, where I've gone to Tim, and Tim has done things while we, put him up on the town.
Yeah, Tim will still do that.
I will, will I still continue to go to Tim as opposed to the?
Yep. But what we may, what we may do is sending off to somebody else to polish it and then come back.
Okay, but basically still the deal through Tim.
Yep.
Other questions for the town manager on this, since we're on it?
I had a question just about the social media support.
Yep.
I know that's one of the things that, since that's really how people in New Market get their, most of their news now, is that, are they going to be providing Facebook posts, things like, all that stuff?
Graphics, Facebook posts.
Okay.
Look at what we have now, streamline it, clean it up, kind of situation.
Okay. Because I just, I saw like, their public safety, holidays, seasonal weather related updates.
Oh yeah, they do that. That's, that's just their.
But I was looking like.
They will do the other stuff, yeah.
Okay, cool. Awesome. All right.
And finally, the railroad crossing closures. You'd guess as good as mine. No, for the dates, we're still looking at the, it was anticipated for the 15th to the 22nd, now we're anticipating it next, the 21st on. It's, you know, each closure is supposed to last three days. My understanding is there's some delays still down. Installing last week, there was a large delay, nothing to do with their project, but a train broke down in the middle of Dover, so they couldn't get other stuff going, so everybody was delayed. But we're still looking at next week, and we'll make sure we get all the notices up there as we can. And will we, and just for the public, we will be putting it online. That's the best place to look is on, on our town website, and as soon as they're ready, we'll put it as an emergency notification. And finally, again, open, charter commission filing period has opened. Councilors can run. I believe we have two filings so far for nine seats, and it will close next, the week from this Friday. There will be a special 3 to 5 p.m. filing period. And that is all I have.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions? Council Blackstone?
Yeah, so you're looking for volunteers for this parking study. I would like to volunteer. How do I do that?
Bark.
Attack Bart.
Bark.
Bark.
And it's a, it's a, it's a team effort, so if you have a partner that would be, that you would like to work with, that, you know, and rope them in.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Ask press.
The way that the study works is that two people will be going around and, and making notes of, you know, of what's going on.
Oh, I see.
So if you like somebody to work with that you appreciate, or would like to have some conversations with during that time, that's, that might be the way to do it.
Would you like to join me?
No, I can't.
Honestly, that's why I thought you were.
I'm busy that day.
No.
Yes. Thank you, Council John. Talk to Bart.
So if anyone here wants to join me, I'd be happy to.
I'm hoping that a lot of high school students will take the opportunity to get some community service credits through this.
Oh, that would be good too, yeah.
Any other questions for the town manager? I was wondering if you could just, I know it'll be on the website, but could you just remind folks, for the railroad crossing closures, where are these? Where are the closures going to be happening?
Route 108, the one near the Dino Mark, in Elm Street.
Now, the Route 108 is signed and, and says the 20th, but that's, could, may or may not be true.
True, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion for the town manager? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Any, any questions, comments or discussion on this month's department reports? Council Ward?
I appreciate the police use of the term kidnapping to describe the goat that went, and was apparently stolen, rather than just saying the goat was stolen, it was kidnapped. So I just wanted to shout out to the police for their wordplay, and that was it.
Okay, thank you, Council Ward. Any other discussion, comments or questions about the department reports? Speaking of, of parking, we have a new parking enforcement officer, so welcome to Sarah. I'm going to mess up your last name. Is it Pereira or Pierera? Pereira?
Sure.
Okay, well, welcome, Sarah. We appreciate your service and, and we're glad you're here helping out in New Market. Fire and rescue, of course, our thoughts and prayers go out to the residents of the property on New Road that was destroyed by the pine tree. I'm so glad that the occupants are safe, and we really hope that the rebuild process is, is a smooth one and that you have the support you need during this time. Public Works, thank you, thanks so much for continuing to work on the household hazardous waste date, and keep us updated. I know everybody's anxious to, anxious to dispose of those, those products in the right way. Oh, and thanks to the engineering and Public Works for sort of managing these multiple construction projects. I know the work that's going on on Ash Swamp is challenging, and now with the railroad closures and not knowing exactly when those are going to be, I know that creates some additional challenges for these departments in the town, so just appreciate the, appreciate the work that you're doing there. Yeah, I think that's, that's all I have. Okay. We will move on with that to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Council Glazberg?
Arts, Culture, Tourism Commission met on April 8th. Let's see, so the, there was a lot of talk last year about putting a statue in, or sculpture in, in the Willie Park. Right now, that's, that was on hold from the original plan, and that the park was presented as it was with the chess tables that are coming. We were talking about the sculptures again, and we decided to push it off until we hear more about the library project. The library project that we have been talking about is, it was supported by everybody, or all the committees and boards in town that were involved, other than the library, which is pretty important. So we're trying to figure out what part of the proposal or the plan they didn't like, to see if we can come to some sort of agreement to, to get some murals going into the library. The master plan is nearly done. The final draft will be presented to us on the commission at the next meeting, May 6th, so that, we'll go over that, and then that'll end up going up the pipeline after that. Something that I think we really wanted to do on the commission is to branch out from just the murals. So Deborah Smith, the chair of the commission, was on vacation recently and met a President Lincoln performer. He was very knowledgeable on all parts of Lincoln's life, and kind of does like a, a show where you can ask questions and get, you know, a factual answer. And he is touring in September, and we had, we voted to pay $400 for one showing for the school at the start of the school year, so he'll come and do a presentation for them. Hopefully, we'll get some information out to the students at the end of the summer, so they can get some questions in, in mind, and maybe some feedback for what they would like to hear about, and, and teachers as well.
You're going to give out free pennies? It won't be free, it'll be one cent.
And that, that is all.
Is the Lincoln performer performing at the elementary or the middle high?
Not sure yet. I just know that the performer will be in the area in the beginning of September, and that the superintendent and will be involved in picking the actual date and location.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Council Glazberg? Okay, thank you very much. Council Ward?
All right, the New Market 300th met on June 9th, and we had a guest speaker, Sam Allen, who was the vice president of the Dover 400th Committee. He talked a little bit about, you know, their process and how they went things through. One thing he did say is that what they first thought was that people wanted history, but what really people wanted was stuff for their kids and beer. So we're working around maybe, you know, incorporating those items until the next.
And not necessarily in that order, right?
No, no, no. But yeah, he did give us some, a lot of like, good ideas, things to ponder, like, again, trying to make it very fun, rather than trying to make, make it fun to bring people in first, rather than try to sell it just on the history alone. The group, and we have broken down into smaller groups to handle various tasks needed for the 300th, so marketing, merchandise, fundraising and events. The website is up at newmarketnewhamshire300.info, at info, I believe. And, sorry, no, that's, yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe it's online. Look up for the New Market New Hampshire 300th, it should be up there. Okay. And now on to the Conservation Commission, which met on the 10th. We had the election of officers appointed to board. Chris Blackstone was made the chair, I think you probably knew about that. Juliana Chison was made vice chair. Ellen Snyder stepped down as chair, but was made the treasurer, and reme, and so we talked about the Rosa Folletts Brook Land Conservation Project, which covers land both in New Market and Durham, so they're trying to create a conservation easement on the New Market piece and the ownership of the Durham piece. Lots of talk about the upcoming Turtle Fest, which is in May, and the Wigan Farm Boardwalk has been repaired. That had been delayed due to frost and some other things, but it is now fixed, so if anyone wants to take a walk down Wigan Farm, the boardwalk is ready for you. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Council Ward.
And t-shirts are available.
And t-shirts are available for Turtle Fest.
They're out my closet.
Meet by our local John Herman, so if you've seen any of those lithographs of like New Market and such, that's, that's what you're going to be getting.
Okay. Any questions for Council Ward? When is Turtle Fest?
It's in May.
It's in, oh God, they're going to.
May 9th.
It's May, I believe it's weekend before my thing, which is going to be, I believe May 10th. I'll, just give me a sec.
No worries. While you're looking that up, I will, are there any other committee reports this evening? Council John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Transportation Committee met last Wednesday. We always meet on the other Wednesday, which is really nice. That way I only have to keep one day a week available to meet for committees. The Transportation Committee talked about the, reviewed the final draft of the master plan chapter, which, the final, final, after all the edits and, you know, spelling checks and all that, will, will appear next time. But we're quite pleased with it, and it's, it's nice to, to be done with it, because it was quite a long process. We, we had a fun activity that we started by using a, a map of the town and identifying, you know, how roads or streets are used to begin the process of road categorization and eventually design standards for different types of streets and roads. This is to, to create a little bit more uniformity and to, and to make sure that roads and road design reflects the, the uses, the intended uses, and, and allows for safe use by all intended users, so that, you know, bicyclists are accounted for, pedestrians are accounted for differently on a collector road, let's say, than a neighborhood street, for example. And that we have, you know, a, a, a speed is communicated by design rather than by a sign that tells you to drive 25. So you, you, the design is, is, is going to be the, the way that a user will understand, oh, I, I'm, this is, this is a place where I can't drive faster, I, I need to drive slower, or here, other people are here on the road too. It's not just me. It is not just a travel lane for cars. I may be, you know, interacting with other users on this, in the same space, so I have to act differently. And we'll, we'll get to that, and I'm sure that, that'll. And we'll get to that, and I'm sure that'll come back in my reports over time. We also talked about the parking study and the need for volunteers. It's going to be a fun day if you have time to do it. It's a partner effort to take, to collect the data, and the same route, the routes are already designed, the route that you'll be walking, you'll have to walk, I think, three times. Not necessarily you, but a team has to walk that same route three times during the day. And it's a team, so that it's a little bit more fun, and it's, you know, a little bit easier also. It's not a difficult task. It's well-described and very clear, so if there's anybody out there who would like to help out with that, volunteers are needed to do that well. There's not really an age limit or a minimum, although being able to read and write is probably a good thing. And that's, I know there's something else that I can't remember right now and that I'm missing, but that's the report for tonight.
Thank you, Council Drumblatt. Any questions for Council Drumblatt? Did you have a question, or you've got?
I don't have any.
Okay, one more, real quick. When is the parking study? When do we need to?
It's going, I don't know yet. I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't have a date. It's going to be a, so the trouble is that we need to have the parking study done ideally while U and H are still in session, so that, so to avoid distortion there, and while school is not on vacation. So we can't do it during school vacation. We have to kind of squeeze it in fairly soon. So that was kind of a dilemma that we were grappling with, and that's why the date hasn't been set, unfortunately.
So it sounds like...
It could be, it could be the week, not this weekend, but the, not this, but the next week, very likely.
So reach out to Bart.
Yes, reach out to Bart, please, or Lindsay.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Drumblatt. And you've got the date of Turtle Fest.
Yes, yes. My apologies. It is on May, Saturday, May 10th. It's going to be, going all across town. The kickoff is at Wigan Farm Conserv- and Conservation at 7:30 for a bird walk. Then there will be presentations at the New Market Junior/Senior High School, starting at 9:30.
I'm going to guess this is AM?
Yes. No, yeah, no, they're going to start, yeah. Be a lunch break from 12, from noon to 1:00. Then there will be Rockingham Rail Trail Field Trip from 1:00 to 3:00. And finally, we will be celebration with music up at the Stone Church from 3:00 to 7:00.
With turtle soup.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Dude, that sounds delightful. Thank you so much.
And in Japan.
And you can get all this information online. Just search Turtle Fest.
Like pink.
Good.
Hang on, councillors.
You can find all this information online by going to New Market Turtle Fest 2025 online.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Council Ward. All right, any other committee reports? Okay. Folks, there are no resolutions or ordinances in the first reading unless I miss some. There are no resolutions or ordinances in the second reading unless I miss some somewhere. Okay. Then is there any correspondence to be read into the record this evening?
There's none.
All right. Then the next item on the business, of business are closing comments by town councillors. Do any councillors have any closing comments this evening? Council Lamatina.
The New Market Town Roadside Cleanup is organized by former councillor and current state representative Tony Wissey, is scheduled for Sunday, April 27th, 9:00 to 11:00. No preregistration is necessary. Just show up at the library, pick up some bags, and tell Tony what your road assignment's going to be, and go to town, clean up the town.
Okay. 9:00 to 11:00, April 27th.
Correct. Sunday, April 27th.
Any other closing comments? Council Ward.
After Turtle Fest on the 10th, on the weekend of the 17th, there will be New Market Cemetery Restoration Day, which me and a few other people are running, where we will be going to a couple of the old cemeteries in town and cleaning them up. At the end of, and at the end of the day, we'll have a historical presentation done by the Historical Society at the Mill Space with some, you know, pizza and finger foods as well. Yeah, if anyone is interested, we have a Facebook event page online, and you can also just email me, bward@newmarketnewhampshire.gov. We're really looking forward to this, and I hope to see you all there.
You said that was the 11th?
That's, no, the 17th.
The 17th, so it's great.
No, yeah, Turtle Fest is the weekend before, which is why I was getting confused with the numbers.
Okay. So May 17th?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Other closing comments? Council Blackstone.
Yeah, I just was thrilled in the police report that they're now being able to recruit new people as a result of this thing, and I just want to say that I was, you know, I'm thrilled that the town council could help address that situation and make it, you know, possible for them to be able to achieve a wage that, you know, is competitive in the industry. And I congratulate the police department on potentially hiring new people.
Well said. Other closing comments? Council Drum?
I just wanted to ask that we, at the next meeting, review existing committees in town and consider their continued usefulness and the possibility of mergers or what have you in order to make sure that we don't have committees lingering out there that are no longer active.
An item of business, something for the council to vote on, is that a work session?
Could be. Yeah, I'll look at it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Council Drumblatt. Any other comments? What do I have? Most of these have already been discussed. Please, please, please contact Bart McDonough to volunteer to help out with the parking study. It's going to do great things for the town, it's a good way to get involved, and like you said, kind of get your steps in. The New Market newsletter has been going out, and it's great. You can sign up for it, you know, on either of the Facebook pages that are kind of, you know, kind of out and about in the town. So please, please, please stay informed. It's a great way to understand what's going on in your community, and it will give you the information that you need to go about your day and to provide feedback and input because this is your town. And those are all of the things that I have. Our next meeting is May 7th, 2025, and if there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned. Thank you very much, councillors.